All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Treasure Island Board of Commissioners meeting for April 16th, 2024. To kick off our meeting, if you could all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Toth?
Here.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Doctor?
Here.
Commissioner Manning? Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Mayor Payne?
Here. Yeah, the microphones are much better than last time. Thank you. All right, next is approval of regular and workshop agendas. Do we have any changes that need to be made to our agenda?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, if we could move the firefighter contract to the front, please?
Okay, so we'll move the item J six up to the first item of business in the Items of Business section. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
We could actually, since J one is going to be relatively quick, we could probably move it to J two.
Let's do it. Move it up, all the way up to the front. I think we're good with that. All right, any other changes? All right, sounds good. Next is Proclamations, Recognitions, and Certificates of Appreciation. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to public comments for non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who has any public comments for anything that we don't have on our agenda this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move into Commissioner Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Toth.
I just have a short report. Thank you all for coming, and I'd also like to recognize Carrie for her work with the Adopt a Beach and how many people came out on Saturday. And then also thank you to the city for our island days. It was really a nice event. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Doctor?
I do not have a report tonight.
Commissioner Manning?
One item, and that is there's going to be a golf scramble at the Treasure Bay on Sunday, April 28th, at 1:00. Cost is $15, and it's hosted by the T.I. Ladies Golf League. So I think if you want to sign up, I think you do it at Treasure Bay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dickey?
I have two upcoming events. One is this Friday, April 19th, at the Pavilion on Sunset Beach. Coffee and cupcakes with the cops. Chief Barkley and some other officers will be there to meet with some of the residents there and hear some of their concerns. That'd be from 9:00 a.m. to noon, so I'm hoping a lot of you can get out there. And then on May 2nd, Thursday, May 2nd, is the barbecue at the Lions Club, which is an annual event we do at Sunset Beach. It's always a big hit. Mr. I Got Him will be doing the barbecue. I don't know if you've ever had his barbecue, but it's very, very good. And the Beach Rats will be providing the entertainment. That starts at 6:00 p.m. and goes until whenever it's over. There's a limited number of tickets, only 130 tickets on that, so anyone who's interested should contact somebody from the Sunset Beach Community Association for tickets for that event.
All right, thank you very much. I do not have a report this evening, so we'll move on. Approval of minutes. We have no minutes this evening. And we have no items on our consent agenda, so we'll move on to presentations. And first up is the Clearwater Marine Aquarium. Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Sure.
Okay, great. Hi, thank you for allowing me to come tonight and speak to you briefly. My name is Wendy Hoflick. I'm the new sea turtle nesting manager for Clearwater Aquarium. This will be my first nesting season with Clearwater. I come from several nesting programs up in the Panhandle. So I've been spending the last six months familiarizing myself with the area and your beaches. Your beaches are beautiful. Treasure Island in particular has done a great job trying to help with the lighting and with some of the Adopt a Beach programs that Mary is initiating. It's very noticeable, and it's going to do great things for our turtles. First, I wanted to speak on behalf of Clearwater Marine Aquarium to thank you for your continued support of our program. Again, like I said previously, Treasure Island's always, from what I understand, a pleasure to work with. And as far as my time here, I've seen that as well. I quickly wanted to review the 2023 nesting results that we had. For our area, that Clearwater Marine Patrols, which is from Clearwater all the way down to Treasure Island, we had 227 nests. It was down significantly from the year before. In the year before, we had over 300. We did expect that season to be a little bit lower, not quite that low. The storm that we had at the end of the season also did a lot of damage to our remaining nests that we had. In addition to the 227 nests, we had 240 false crawls. Usually expect about a 50% false crawl rate for every nest, so that is a little bit high, which tells me that the turtles are encountering something when they get on the shore that they're not liking, which makes them turn around and go back into the water. Whether it's the amount of people on the beach at night, lighting, quality of the sand, which is probably not that. It's more likely lighting and/or people on the beach that's deterring them from nesting. In addition to that, we had, for the, for Treasure Island, Treasure Island only, we had 25 nests, 37 false crawls. We also had 10 disorientations, which means that of the 25 nests, 10 of them that hatch, the hatchlings went the wrong way. And that is typically always due to lighting issues. Whether it's direct light or glow, the hatchlings are going that direction. In addition to that, we had six obstructive nesting activities, which is where a turtle comes onto the beach, either nests or attempts to nest, but encounters a man-made object which disrupts their process. That could be a seawall, it could be lounge chair, it could be any type of man-made structure. So all of that information we report every year to Florida Fish and Wildlife. Looking forward to 2024, we have started our patrols. We started them yesterday. While the official sea turtle nesting season starts May 1st, the turtles don't always look at the calendar. And Florida Fish and Wildlife recommends that we start our patrols no later than April 15th, and we follow those guidelines. So if any of you were out on the beach early yesterday morning or this morning, you might have seen some of my team. We were out there, and we will be out there every morning between yesterday and October 31st. Additionally, we'll be doing our annual lighting surveys twice this year. The first set of surveys will take place April 29th through May 4th. And then the second set of surveys will take place from July 7th through July 12th. This is, we report all of this to Pinellas County. However, if you want to see what the lighting results were for your particular area, let me know, and I can make sure that we get that information shared with you. Lastly, we are on initiative to do even more with lighting. I'm looking to work with some of your hotels in the areas. We have window clings that we would like to place on some of the interior sliders that face the Gulf. It's just a small reminder, it's right, you put it right where the handle of the slider is. It reminds people to please close your drapes at night. When you're out on the beach, please do not use bright lights. Please fill in your holes, just all the turtle-friendly things that people who are not from here may not know. So we're working to do that in all of the municipalities on our stretch of beach. We are also going to be out with you on Earth Day on Saturday. Looking forward to that. And that is all I have today. If any of you have any questions, comments, I'm happy to speak about turtles as long as you want.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda is a presentation by Treasure Island Adopt a Beach.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Carrie Auerbach, Treasure Island Adopt a Beach. I want to thank you for inviting me to be here tonight. Thrilled, and this is a very big passion of mine, so I'm happy to share it with you. The mission of Treasure Island Adopt a Beach is serving to keep the island safe and clear for people and wildlife by creating a culture of a trash-free beach while striving to be a model for other communities. Creating a culture of a clean beach through education is pretty much what I figured would be the answer to most of our problems. We have visitors who come here every day who do not know about our endangered turtles or don't realize how important it is to pick up your trash. So I figured if we educate our visitors and our residents, we can make a difference. I started Treasure Island Adopt a Beach in 2000. It was the summer of one of the first years I moved here. And I saw something, as I was walking in today on my phone. Somebody should do something about that. Then I realized I am somebody, and that's an old Lily Tomlin quote. And so I figured, well, let's just start by picking up trash, and let's start with a beach cleanup, and let's do this, and let's do that, and all sorts of activities. And all of a sudden, I found Keep Pinellas Beautiful. And they brought me under their wing, and they give me supplies and have done such great things for supporting me and what my group does here on Treasure Island. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of the projects that we do and how you, as residents, can be involved. Here are the numbers that Keep Pinellas Beautiful has kept, I give them a report after every cleanup. So in 2023, we had 377 volunteers. We collected over 2,100 pounds of trash and almost 200 pounds of recycling, which came up to about 2,400 volunteer hours. So we're out there every second Saturday doing beach cleanups. I'll talk about that in a second. But we also do this cigarette receptacle thing where you know now there's an ordinance for no smoking on the beach. And so there are selected areas that you can smoke. There are parking lots, but not on the beach and not on the beach walk. So there are 18 receptacles along the beach trail in parking lots, and I've taken upon myself to empty them once a month. And 10 of them were donated by Keep Pinellas Beautiful. I've got the keys to all of them. And I go around on my bike, and I just empty them out, and I keep track of whether they're quarter full, half full. And it's been fun keeping track of them and reporting that. Each receptacle probably holds 100 and 150 cigarette butts. So I've been enjoying watching the increase of these receptacles being used. I think it's a good thing, and not finding the butts on the beach or on the sidewalks or in the parking lots. As, oh, sorry. So what can you do? I have a great Facebook page. I've got 7,000 followers. We're on Instagram as well. But the Facebook page will tell you when there are cleanups, if there are special cleanups, some other projects that we're involved in, so please jump on Facebook. If you don't have Facebook or Instagram, you can always reach out to me at treasureislandadoptabeach@gmail.com. Every second Saturday, we are across the street from Waffle House at the St. Pete Municipal Lot. Under the pavilion, I give out supplies, free supplies, free parking, free goodies. It's a lot of fun. Last Saturday, we did a collaboration with Trash Colin, and he has 2 million followers on TikTok. Trash Wolf was there. If you've ever seen him, he dresses up like a wolf, and he goes out and collects trash. But we had 100 people show up, and we played games, and we had food donated by the Floridian and Dunkin' Donuts. And everyone had a great time, so I was really proud of that. And you can always go out and clean the beach, do it yourself. And also, there's a beach cleanup at Caddy's every second Saturday. Richard Harris does that cleanup. So come to his, come to mine. It's a great time and some really wonderful people. We're doing this, we've been doing a whole patrol, and we're going to expand it this year as beach ambassadors. And so that it's not just during turtle season. And if anybody's interested, please reach out to me. It's going to be a whole new initiative of patrolling the beach after, like, right around sunset, filling holes, knocking down mounds, reporting improper lighting. And I'll have more information about the beach ambassador plan at another time. But we want to keep the beach clean, dark, and flat. Actually, if you look here, one night, we were patrolling, and that sandcastle was there, and the next, and we knocked it down, and the very next morning, there was a turtle nest there. So she didn't get spooked, she didn't do a false crawl, and so that was a really cool thing to witness. And many of you know that tragedies struck the East Coast after a seven-year-old girl died in a collapsed hole on the beach. Very tragic, and we don't need to say more about that, but really horrific. We are going to work really hard this year with turtle lighting. The city code violation, City Code Department does a great job. We have an incredible code here in Treasure Island that really enforces taking care of your improper lighting. And we want to get involved and stay in touch with Clearwater Marine Aquarium so that our beaches are dark during turtle season. And also, in December, we have a 5K run, Run for the Beaches. You don't have to be a runner, you don't have to be a walker, you can just come. It's a great party. We run or walk the beach at 8:00 a.m. from the Thunderbird, past Caddy's, and back again. And the band actually starts at 9:00 a.m., so it's a good morning party. We will have Keep Pinellas Beautiful, Seaside Sea Bird Sanctuary, Friends of the Pelicans, Oh, Another Bird Organization. And all of the proceeds will come back to the city. They go back to these organizations to do great things for our environment and for Treasure Island. So one of the things our money went to this year, we will be planting sea oats on Saturday. We also have in the works a water filling station, cooling and filtered. It will be a Gulffront lot. So we've donated the proceeds to go towards that as well. As I said, this Saturday, we're doing a sea oat planting. We've got plenty of volunteers, but we'll be celebrating that, the Run for the Beaches money, and Keep Pinellas Beautiful donated 5,000 sea oats, so we'll be planting those and looking forward to getting our beaches back. And then one other really fun thing that we do, and we've noticed great improvement. On July 4th, I will gather volunteers, and I will drop off 20 or 30 koozies that are filled with trash bags. And you go out and walk the beach and hand them out to people, visitors. We've done this two years in a row, and you can see a noticeable improvement because the trash cans get full during the day. So we like to walk around in the afternoon, and Deb Toth was there. It was a great time. And you really get to meet some super people. So if you're interested in being a part of that, please reach out to me again at treasureislandadoptabeach@gmail.com. And I just really believe, think globally, act locally. We've got some important phone numbers up there on the screen. I'm available to talk to anybody about this. I'm really passionate, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Anybody have any questions? I could talk about this for days. Okay, thanks so much.
We all know that you do wonderful work, and thank you, and keep it up. All right. Moving on with our agenda, we're moving into our Items of Business. And as amended, we will move up. And the first item is Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 4966.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good afternoon. I'm here to present the collective bargaining agreement that we worked so hard on to come to terms with, with the labor union. This is Lieutenant Stephen Rowland. He's our vice president for the International Association of Firefighters Local Chapter. Just a couple of the highlights. I'm sure you guys have all read through it, but for the audience, we made a few changes with our overarching goal being, we really wanted to be competitive in the marketplace for firefighter paramedics, which are in great demand right now, just with the land boom and the housing boom in the state of Florida. For some reason, firefighter paramedics are not moving here, or if they are, they don't want to work. So it's pretty much a statewide problem that we can't fill these positions. We realized through data analysis that we were the lowest-paid firefighter paramedics in Pinellas County out of the other 17 departments. So through negotiating and doing a few back and forth, we've gotten ourselves up into the top third. That's where we hope to stay, so we can retain the best and the brightest. When we need to attract someone, we can get them to come and apply to our department to be able to better serve the citizens of Treasure Island. So I just wanted you to talk a little bit about.
Sure. I've just got something real quick. I'm not one who loves public speaking, so I just want to give a thanks to both the Fire Department Administration and the entire management team during this negotiation process. It was evident from the very beginning that we did have the same goals in mind from the start. I want to give a personal thank you to Mr. Brumback for coming back and finishing this project with us. I'm still holding out hope that I can keep you here for a little while longer. Commissioners, Mayor, I appreciate the support and the commitment, not only to the fire department, but our firefighters as well. Lastly, for our line members behind me, I thank you all for allowing me to represent you. It's a privilege and an honor. It's not something that I take lightly. So thank you all.
Thank you.
We're here for any questions you may have on the agreement.
All right, do we have any questions for the chief or the city manager?
I have a few questions, and please do not misinterpret any of these questions as my lack of support for our firefighters. I have nothing but the utmost respect for them. I support them, and I admire their dedication and their courage in the jobs they do. But I do have some questions. The item in the agreement that caught my attention the most was the 15% increase in year one. And in this day and time and environment, 15% increases are not that common. So I did want to talk a little bit about that. And as I understand, you have, your primary goal here is to get us off of the bottom in the pay range there and closer to the, at least the top 50%, or at least in the bottom of the top one-third, I think, is the way it was originally described to me. But anyway, I'm still kind of concerned about that 15%. Let me ask you a couple of questions about open positions. Do we currently have any open positions that we're trying to fill and are having difficulty doing so because of our current salary range?
No, sir, we do not. We do have two firefighter EMTs currently. We're in all paramedic departments. So those folks were hired without the required qualifications, and we're sending them to school because we just couldn't find qualified firefighter paramedics. That's the case with the last, including those two, the last four hires.
Okay. And a related question, turnover, has turnover been a big issue in the past year or so amongst the firefighter ranks?
Given our relatively small size, I would say yes. We've lost three in the past year. The two that we just replaced, we were not able to replace with paramedics.
All right, and I noticed in your, in the write-up, it mentioned that the cost of this 15% increase was going to be about $212,000. For the 15% increase, is that?
That's correct. It's an average increase of 25% over the three years of the contract. And how we got there was, first of all, prior to this contract, the firefighters and the police officers during COVID both took a year of wage owners and did no pay, no pay increase for a year. So that put us a little behind, quite a bit behind. And then during the last three-year contract, which is expiring, this one we'll replace, many municipalities did wage-only openers and tried to catch up with other contracts that were being done. We did not do that. In hindsight, that might have been a better plan to offset this initial 15% increase in year one of this three-year agreement to get us up to where we need to be. We were $19,000 below starting paramedic salary, the highest starting paramedic salary in the county, and 25,000, or 28,000 below the top out for firefighter paramedic of the highest-paying agency. So it's a great place to work. People want to work here. They love the culture, the environment, the beach. Our department is good. It's just hard to keep them here when they're young and trying to raise families, and they, you know, they see that great shiny thing of dollars somewhere else.
And then the last question I have, thank you for those answers. This, these new rates would, as you had written in here, would have us about the seventh highest in the county for starting salaries, but the second highest on the top end of the range. And second highest, that would put us up with St. Petersburg, Clearwater, the really large cities. So I was just curious, I understand moving the minimum range from bottom up to maybe the middle or a little bit better than the middle, but the, to be in, the top end of the range being at the second highest in the county seemed a bit aggressive. Could you respond to that?
I can, and we're thinking, we want these folks to come here and be here for a career. So it takes 14 years, which is a long step plan, to get to that top out. We only have one person that's going to even make it in the contract, and that's if he doesn't retire before the end of the contract. We've got a really young department. The way we structured the 14-year step plan, it's 3% increases each step for the first half, the first seven years. And all but two of our firefighters fall into that, and then 4% increases over the back half. That's in place now, and since we wrapped up our negotiations, our neighbors to the north ratified a contract that puts us down in third. And there are five other agencies currently in negotiations. So I don't anticipate being that high on the top-out salary for very long.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions?
Appreciate everything that you've done for us, especially, you know, in 2020. You know, it was going to be a big hit, and I think that we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2027 agreement between the City of Treasure Island and the IAFF Local 4966.
It's been moved and approved. Do we have, or moved and seconded, do we have any discussion or comments?
No, I'm just really glad to see that we have the firefighter paramedics, and I commend those who've gone to school and moved on up to being a paramedic. I know how important that is. I'm a nurse. Kudos to y'all. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Just comment for me, I think I appreciate Commissioner Dickey's questions. I think those are all really important things to ask, and I recognize that it does move us into a much higher position in the ranking, but, you know, just with every, every career, every profession, it is a very competitive work environment. So I think we need to make sure that we're certainly not the bottom of the list, and getting us right up into that middle to top range, I think, is a good idea because we have a great department, and we really want to make sure that we keep it that way. We've come a long way since I was first on the commission over the last six years. The department was nothing like it is now, so thank you, chief, for your hard work on the culture and also the members of the department, too. It doesn't just take a good chief, it takes a great department to do that, and good people coming on board. So thank you, guys, for creating that culture that people do want to work at, even when we're at the lowest end of the spectrum. So I as well appreciate you guys, and thank you, City Manager Brumback, for negotiating this for us and leading the way. Anything else? All right, do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Manning?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. All right, it's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, next item is J one, which is a quasi-judicial proceeding continued from November 7th, 2023. Case number EAR-000394-2023 for 9900 Gulf Boulevard, an after-the-fact variance request to allow an existing swimming pool to encroach into the 10-foot setback. I'll turn it over to our city attorney. I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
All right. So for a brief explanation of the proceedings tonight, the applicant will have ten minutes to present, and then staff will have ten minutes to present. We'll then take, then there'll be an allowance for a five-minute applicant rebuttal, commission questioning, and a close of the public hearing, and then commission action. However, before we begin, I need to ask the commission, do you have any ex parte communications that need to disclose at this time?
No.
Nope.
Yeah.
I, mine's on.
I think you'd need to be a little closer.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. I have to be really close. Okay. Well, with that, anybody who wishes to speak tonight, if you could please stand, if you're able, and raise your right hand to be sworn in. The clerk will swear you in.
Is there anyone else that's going to be giving testimony?
Someone from the applicant going to be speaking.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that what you're telling the city commission is the truth, the whole true, truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have consulted with the applicant. Due to the absence of an erosion control line, it's going to be very difficult for you all to make a decision tonight. So staff's recommendation in consult with the applicant is to table this to a future date once the ECL has been established.
Okay. We'll still go, move forward with the hearing, though, because we'll need to.
We can ask the applicant if that's acceptable to them, and then if so, you can take action.
Okay. So just include that as part of your application. So we'll open the public hearing and turn it over to the applicant. Make sure you talk microphone. That one you have to be a little closer to.
Basically, the pool is encroaching, on average, about two feet into the mean-high water line, and the variance is just a request to allow that. The mean-high water line in the City of Treasure Island, it varies and it's not consistent. So there's a lot of confusion with so many lines along that beach, so it gets very confusing.
Okay. Anything else to add? All right. And you're amenable to the city manager's suggestion?
We can come back to it.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Does our staff have anything to add?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Yes, staff has nothing else to add. It's the exact same as November, and we. That's the table.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the staff or the applicant?
Are we correct in assuming that if the ECL is favorable to the applicant, that this is moot?
Commissioner, no. I actually do not have, I'm not sure where they are deciding to put this line. Stacy Boyles might have a little bit more knowledge on that.
I'm not asking where it was, but if, in the end, it turns out that the applicant's need for variance is gone because they are, in fact, within the ECL, then this becomes unnecessary?
Possibly. It's going to depend. So as of right now, the Treasure Island Mean High Water Line, where it's located, we're not sure where they're going to put the line now. So it still might be, it still might be less than ten feet away from their swimming pool.
Raising the question differently, if you, if the final line, the ECL that is established, is five feet seaward of where it is currently, that would give them the needed room where they wouldn't need a variance, right?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Now I do understand. Sorry about that. But yes.
Then three feet.
Yes. If they would increase an additional, up to three feet, then they definitely would not need this variance.
All right. Any other questions for staff? We'll, we're about to do public comment, so you can, actually, you're part, you're with the applicant, right? Okay. We'll need to, we'll need to swear you in first, so if you can. City clerk will swear you in.
Mara.
Hang on one second. You'll have to listen to the city clerk.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony or evidence that you're about to give before the city commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Come up, yeah, you can come to the mic.
My name is Mara. I am the project architect. So I worked with my crewman on establishing this pool in this location. And now this line is running in just a certain, in just a certain area in Treasure Island. It's not existing anywhere in Pinellas County. So I looked around to find out what is the meaning of this line. And on the website, I found, I found something written about it. It was established in nineteen sixty-eight. It's called Mean High Water Line, established because a beach re-nourishment project done in nineteen sixty-eight. So I don't understand what's the relation between the re-nourishment line and our pool. What is the relation? Why would there be a relation between a re-nourishment line made in nineteen sixty-eight and the pools in this area? I don't understand it. Somebody can explain it to me?
Sure. So based on my understanding from the previous hearing that we had and my understanding of the Mean High Water Line, that is essentially, for purposes of setbacks, that is the property line. So there's also, there's another line that's the coastal construction control line, and they kind of do this along our beach sometimes, sometimes.
They run very close together. Is that what's causing?
Right. So sometimes the coastal construction control line is the effective property line, and sometimes the T. I. Mean High Water Line is the effective property line. So you have to.
That's explaining our.
Confusion.
Our confusion.
Sure. So that's what we, as we discussed at the last meeting, the best hope for us to have a resolution on this is to have a new ECL, which is in the works, which could be a year, could be a year and a half down the road, could be two years down the road. But in the meantime, this is the best, because as we discussed at the last hearing, if we go off of the facts of this case, there really isn't a case for a variance here. So this is the best, the best route forward is to postpone it until we have, hopefully, an ECL that is more favorable for the applicant.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure.
If we're going to be tabled, we still have an open permit that I cannot close at the time. So how do I handle that?
Can we, that a question I cannot answer. They have, so the question is, they have, they have an open permit. So until, if we postpone this, they'll continue to have an open permit until the variance is closed or withdrawn, correct? Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any public comment? Sure. Do, does public comment have to be sworn in as well? Okay.
Please raise your right hand.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Carr.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony that you're about to give before the city commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a similar situation on ninety-six-hundred Gulf Boulevard as to what Omar, his architect and homeowner, have requested a two-foot variance into the setback, which is a ten-foot setback. We're trying to determine if this process is, makes the pool feasible this year, or do we have to wait years to have that two-foot encroachment to the setback? Encroaching two feet into the setbacks allows us to have a possible eight-foot wide swimming pool, which is, on a ten-to-fifteen-million-dollar home on the beach, really isn't that exciting. If we can get a ten-foot wide pool allowing a splash pad and a small ten-foot by twenty-foot pool, it just creates a somewhat more usable space. We already are against the structure of the home itself. So when trying to request these proposals to encroach two feet means a huge difference of utility of the space. Building the pool underneath the house is a consideration that we already have considered where we will put the hot tub. But when we reviewed the neighboring properties of ninety-six-hundred to the north and south, both pools are approximately eight feet from that property line. So in looking at like properties throughout the Gulf Beach front, we've been disapproved to go through the variance process, which is a timely ordeal. We understand that, but we have to decide, you know, if they don't get approved for a variance, you know, is this an uphill battle and we're just spinning wheels? So I just want to make that as a public comment that, you know, and I've known, you know, the builder, you know, for several years, Omar, as well, throughout the community, and he's a stand-up guy, you know, whatever happened or whatever, you know, I don't understand. But I, speaking on his behalf, for his goodwill and his intentions to close permits, I know he's a stand-up guy. He's on site. And I understand from the homeowner's perspective and the builder's perspectives on having an effective, usable space for a swimming pool is important for all of us as the builders and the homeowners and, you know, the taxpayers of the community, they're here to make this a better space. So if there's any kind of way that we can help express whatever the Mean High Water Line or any coastal setbacks, if there's a way that those can be expedited or some type of hedging on what these predicaments will be, would help us, also in our situation, determine whether we have to make just a hot tub or, you know, can we get that extra two feet for somewhat of a usable space? And there is, there is a rooftop pool, a hot tub on the rooftop of this house, but with having almost twenty-four hours of sunlight, it creates a really hot, you know, three-foot-deep little hot tub. So it's not a really, the ideal space for a kid, and it's hard to express hardship when you're on a roof with your family. You know, I could say that's not the best place to have, you know, tots running around. But if we can get a space where, you know, a kid can jump in a pool and not across the pool, it just makes it a little better space. So, and just speaking on the behalf of the community and on their behalf of the variance and ours, I would like to, I don't know if there's a way that this can be expedited. It's government. I understand that there's a process and procedure. But I would like to have a better understanding of where we need to project so we can get the pool in the home, no matter what size it is, so the homeowner can use their home as a home and have their CCL. It's really difficult being right on that choke point of ninety-six-hundred and where the Seven-Eleven in Treasure Island Sunset Beach is, because it is just a very congested area. So we can finish the construction, understand where we're going, and whatever their determination is, will help us understand where we're going. So we're petitioning for any variances for that extra two feet in the setback, which I feel is reasonable on a ten-foot setback in a personal standpoint. So thank you, guys, for hearing me.
Thank you. And it really sounds like you're asking the most proper path forward would be for us to change that code and that setback, not to allow more, we can't allow variances. We have very strict rules on the variances. So that's something that I can talk to you about offline and like what that process is. And so I have business cards out on the front desk. If you want to reach out, we can.
Seven-and-a-half foot setback on the rear, that would be amazing.
Yeah, that would help.
I'll take one of the cards and we'll send an email with the builder and homeowner in the same format. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Does the applicant have a rebuttal at all? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and do we have, so our motion will be to postpone or? Continue until, continue indefinitely?
We would just table the matter because we don't have a specific date to continue it to.
Okay.
And then once that line is established, then we can see where we are with this case and bring it back.
All right. Do we have a motion to table?
Yes. I move that case number VAR zero-zero-zero-three-nine-four dash two-zero-two-two. Location ninety-nine-hundred Gulf Boulevard be tabled until further.
Yeah, established.
Further notice. Thank you.
I'm sorry. One quick, I think you said two-zero-two-two. It should be two-zero-two-three. Are you willing to make that amendment?
Sure. Because, yeah, I hear it's two-zero-two-two. Got it.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
We're waiting for the ECL from the state to provide us the information for beach re-nourishment purposes.
Right. So this is, so the ECL.
Beach re-nourishment in the future, too, of what we do.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So for the public's knowledge, part of the beach re-nourishment process, what the Army Corps of Engineers is telling us is that we do not have an erosion control line that is acceptable to them, which would determine what properties in Sunset Beach and Sunshine Beach would require easements in order for the Army Corps to move forward with. So they've told us that we need to work with the state to establish a new ECL. So we are working with the county and the state in order to get that line, that line established, but it will be a long process. I was hopeful that it would, it ultimately has to be approved by the state legislature. So we're on a bit of a time, their timeframe as well. So the next legislative session will be in March to May of 2025. So that is the earliest that we would have, May 2025 is the earliest that we would have a new ECL. So by postponing this, this gets, gives the applicant at least until then to enjoy their pool and not have to have us decide that they need to rip out two feet of it. So that's, yeah, the ECL situation.
Right. Which is good for all the island people.
And that would, if they do move, if the ECL is further out than where it is currently, that would also help the situation for other homeowners in the area who are looking to build bigger pools because they would have a little bit more room. But we have no idea if that will actually be seaward, like closer to the water or closer to the land. They could establish a new ECL that's even closer to the property lines, or to the houses than the current Mean High Water Line. In that situation, we'll have to make a decision, and that would be less favorable for homeowners, in which case we probably would want to take a look at how the code's written and those setbacks. So that's kind of where we are. All right. Any other discussion or comments?
The comment is that perhaps we could pass an ordinance that would do away with that. Would that not be in conflict with the established ECL?
An ordinance that would do, do away with what?
That would reduce the setback.
Oh. I mean, certainly it's within the purview of the commission to have an ordinance that would, you know, change. That's something that's fully within your authority to do.
Even though that's, ordinance may conflict with an established ECL?
The ordinance wouldn't change the line. It would just change, you're talking about just changing your setback, right? Not changing, you're not changing the nineteen sixty-eight Mean High Water Line. Or am I misunderstanding your question?
The passion would be that we would change the setback. So instead of ten feet from the property line, we could make it five feet or seven feet, and that would also resolve this situation. So I don't know. We can maybe workshop that, or we can talk to the building department about what that would look like and what the rationale for a ten-foot setback is.
Do we want to do that before we have the ECL? Because then it becomes compromised, however the end result of the ECL is. Whatever you change now.
Yeah. So if we reduced the setback and then the ECL was even further out to water, then we are giving even more.
Right.
Space.
Yeah. Our recommendation would be the ECL comes first and then. Yeah, our recommendation would be the ECL comes first and then adjust whatever setbacks you are comfortable with. But until the, until the ECL is established, it doesn't make-
Yeah. Okay. We've already done public comment and the hearings closed at this time. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. And those are conversations that may be best had between each commissioner and the city manager or the community improvement or development department to kind of talk about what the best course of action there is. I don't know if there is some rationale for having that ten-foot, but I'm sure there is. There's always a rationale. All right, moving on. Item number two is second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five, amending chapter sixty-eight zoning regulations regarding public boardwalks.
Ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five, an ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending chapter sixty-eight zoning regulations of the City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances by revising Article One in general, section sixty-eight dash two, definitions to add definition for public boardwalk, amending section sixty-eight dash four sixty-three miscellaneous lot regulations to include a public boardwalk as an allowed structure over water, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is the second reading for ordinance twenty-four oh five, as Jen just mentioned, amending chapter sixty-eight by adding a new definition for a public boardwalk and including a boardwalk as an allowed structure. As mentioned during the first reading in March, staff and LPA evaluated the LDRs and determined that a clear definition was needed to be more consistent with existing public boardwalks and to distinguish between boardwalks and docks. Therefore, LPA recommended through resolution twenty-two-four oh three that a definition be established for consistency and to bring those existing structures into conformance. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading, so.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the staff?
Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment. In my conversation with Commissioner Dickey, there was potential concern about the fact that it didn't require it to be over water. It doesn't forbid it from being over water, it just allows for it to also be on land. So any agreements that we currently have with condominiums or so forth that require the maintenance of a boardwalk, this provides more flexibility, but it does not provide a route for not complying.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have a moment? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-oh-five on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, any commission discussion or comments?
One question, how many public boardwalks are there in Treasure Island?
Two.
Two?
Both in Sunset Beach. Now, there are many walkovers, but the boardwalks themselves are, one's ours and one's lands in by management. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right, thank you. Next is item three, appointment of an alternate member to the Gulf Beaches Public Library Board.
The purpose of this agenda item is to seek the commission's approval for the appointment of an alternate member of the Gulf Beaches Public Library. The appointment becomes necessary due to the vacancy resulting from the resignation of Mr. Jim Tenziano from his role as the Treasure Island's resident representative. So the next step for mayor and commission's consideration is to select a new applicant for the resident, and we have one, which is Mrs. Wetzel, Mrs. Mary Beth Wetzel, so for your consideration.
All right, thank you. That sounds wonderful. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I move to appoint Mary Beth Wetzel to serve on the Gulf Beaches Public Library Board as an alternate member.
Second.
Okay, any comments or discussion from the commission? I think former Commissioner Wetzel will do a fantastic job. It's a great way to keep her involved in the community. And I did post this on all forms of social media. I know the city did a great job of doing some outreach to try to get some volunteers for this, and Beth was the only one that put her hat in the ring, so I think she will do a great job. Any public comment? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is item four, which is a motion to accept a donation from the Rotary Club of the Gulf Beaches to the Parks and Recreation Department.
The Rotary Club of the Gulf Beaches is generously donating a thousand dollars to our summer camp scholarship fund to assist families who cannot otherwise afford our registration fees. And I know that they are here to speak on this item as well as take a photo.
All right.
I'm Rosemary Thompson. We've got Susan Smith, and we've got Pam Brangaccio. Okay, so we're here, Mayor and Commissioners, in your nice new building to donate two checks tonight, as a matter of fact. One is one thousand dollars, that is for the Recreation Department for the Summer Rec Program Scholarship Fund, one thousand dollars. Then we have a check that comes to you by way of the twenty-fifth annual Golf and Tennis Classic that we held in February. So this was, it was supposed to, turn the thing over? There you go. Oh.
Yeah, we'll do the two, two donations as separate agenda items. So we'll approve the, this one, and then we'll move on to the next one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the donation?
I move to accept the generous donation from the Rotary Club of Gulf Beaches for the Parks and Recreation Department Scholarship Fund in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Thank you and happy to second.
All right, do we have any comments or discussion from the commission? All right, any public comment? All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. We'll do a, we'll take a picture with the commission after the agenda items if you want. Okay, and the next item is number five, which is a motion to accept the net profits from the Gulf Beaches Rotary, Rotary Club's Twenty-Fifth Annual Tennis Challenge. So I'll let you speak to that now.
Well, you know, that meant more to me because I worked harder on it.
I know.
Okay, so we have a check for six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, which represents the city's half of our accomplishment for the Twenty-Fifth Annual Gulf Beaches Golf and Tennis Challenge. That's a mouthful, so I can take my time on that. It's always delightful to come here and to be able to recognize the people in the Recreation Department who helped us, Kathy Hay Duke and Renee and Mike from the Recreation Department, and then the people from Treasure Bay, that would be Kevin Fairchild, I always remember, yeah, Fairchild, Kevin Fairchild and Phil Girardi, who is the tennis coach. We really work very hard at it, and I'd like to thank all of the people who were donors and sponsors. The sponsors' names have been up at Treasure Bay, so you can see them still, I believe. And so thank you for letting us, for working with us, actually, and it was a treat.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve payment of six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents from the Gulf Beaches Rotary Club for the city's percentage of the net profits from the Twenty-Fifth Annual Gulf Beaches Rotary Club's Golf and Tennis Challenge to be used for the Recreation Department, children's camps, and Treasure Bay Tennis Juniors Programs.
Second.
All right, any comments or discussion? Thank you all very much, we appreciate it. And do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you guys very much. We'll take a picture in front of the dais. Fire Rescue Training Facility.
Mayor, Commissioners, good to see you again. This is an agreement with the City of Clearwater so that our fire department can, and hopefully do, can participate in Fire Ops one oh one. I know I've had some of you out there before. This is a great program that, and it gives you a picture of a day in the life of a firefighter. So you get to put the gear on, you get to pick up the tools, cut cars, drag hoses through smoky environments, search in a blacked-out area, all entirely safely, being guided by the firefighters, and you get a good explanation of what our, our workday is like when we have to go to work. So to do that, we just need to agree to hold them harmless in case we have an injury and our normal workers' comp would prevail, so.
When is Fire Ops?
Glad you asked. Fire Ops is May eleventh, and you're all invited. I would love to have you there. If you, if you'd like to come, just reach out to me and we'll get you fitted for gear and get you the appropriate time and place to be and make sure you're taken care of.
Perfect. I've done it, I know former Commissioner Wetzel did it. Did he do it back in the day?
Yeah.
It was an awesome experience, so I definitely encourage anyone who hasn't done it to check it out. And if you're not comfortable doing it, you can go out and just be there and see, it's a lot of elected officials do it. It's a great, great thing.
It's a great partnership between labor and, you know, the fire chiefs. We, we support, this is a labor initiative. We support them and help them put this on, as does, you know, whoever the host agency is, in this case Clearwater. So there's plenty of observers, there's plenty of folks on hand to explain what's going on, and it's really a fun day. You get a T-shirt, you get fed, usually have barbecue, it's a good time.
Yes. All right, do we have any questions for the chief? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the hold harmless agreement with the City of Clearwater to allow our fire department to utilize Clearwater's fire training grounds for in-service training.
Second.
All right, any commission discussion? All right, hearing none, any public comment? All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Next item is item eight, authorize the city manager to approve a purchase authorization to Vortex Services LLC for lateral inspection and lining services in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is really an administrative task that we're doing here. We have two contractors that perform lining for us. We have one contractor, Enviro Waste, that does the main lines, and then we have Vortex that does the laterals. In the beginning, we gave Enviro Waste a one-point-five-million-dollar purchase order. What I'm trying to do with this is take two hundred thousand dollars from that PO and transfer it to another PO that you all approved. You had approved three P, purchase orders for Vortex. We have one that's about thirteen thousand that remaining, we have two thou, two hundred and five thousand, and we have a five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar purchase order, a total of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. However, when I came to you all for the five hundred thousand, we had forty-five, we had, we have forty-five laterals that were remaining. We only had enough money to do thirty-five. But this two hundred thousand dollars will allow us to do the other ten on Gulf Boulevard, so we can finish up the Gulf Boulevard lateral lining. In addition to the transferring it over, these, both of these projects fall under the one-point-five-million dollars that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection gave us as a grant. So either one of these is being reimbursed by the state. So I'm just taking two hundred from this one and I'll transfer it to this one. And it's just, you've already approved the one-point-five, so I'm still within the budget of what was originally approved. I'm just transferring money from one to another. I think that is it. So I move to, I'll take any questions from you.
Yeah. All right, do we have any questions for Mike? Any questions? All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve staff's recommendation to authorize, yep, one second here, the city manager to execute an additional purchase authorization of two hundred thousand dollars with Vortex Services LLC.
Second.
Any commission discussion or comments?
Is it really an additional purchase or is it a transfer of funds?
It's a transfer of funds.
But it's still a purchase authorization.
I was just clarifying because I was getting a little in the weeds with the terminology of what we were doing. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Any public comment? Sure, yeah. Can you wait until you, just for those at home?
Tuning one-one-two-oh-five-thirty, just out of curiosity, if you have two different contracts, shouldn't you be terminating a certain amount from one before you increase another? Just a question.
Okay, thank you.
The answer, the answer to that is yes. We will reduce the purchase order of one, two hundred thousand dollars, and transfer it over to the other one for two hundred thousand, so it's a zero.
Should we be reducing the spending authority for the other one? Or is that not a needed practice?
The answer is you can. It's not necessary. We're not going to spend things that we're not supposed to spend.
By changing the amount that's allowable under the purchase order, you have effectively, he can spend beyond the amount of the purchase order. So when you're moving from one account to another, when you're reducing, increasing the other, even if you granted a greater authority there, if you only granted the purchase order threshold to a certain amount, they can't spend over that amount.
Okay, so through this action that we're taking tonight, that also changes the purchase order?
That is correct.
Yes.
So nothing, it can't be spent, you can't spend more than the purchase order? And that, so that's taken care of through this?
Without coming back.
Further comments? Sure.
Actually, but the contract, right? You got a contract with one company and a contract with a different company. So the question is, that I'm posing is, should you make an adjustment to the legal contract of one to the others, even though you may- contract of one to the others, even though you may internally shift your financial work? The question is, have you adjusted the contracts so they're not on the hook from one contract?
With task orders, so when we get a task order from them, we approve each task that comes up. So, we would not be able to approve that next task for them if we didn't have the limit. So we're not going to task out more than the total amount minus the $200,000 that's being shifted.
Correct, we've not guaranteed the $5 million.
No.
Okay, so that's just our bookkeeping.
That is correct. These, both of these are off the same piggyback contract, it's the Miami Beach contract for lining and inspections. So I just piggybacked off of it, and told them, here's the amount of money I have in my budget, and then what we do is we task order them and say, okay, how much is it going to cost us to do all the inspections, the reporting, and the prioritization? And they give me a task, it's, let's say, $175,000. So I've only authorized them $175,000. Then they come back, and let's say they're $3,000 less, or $13,188 less. So now I still have that amount, but I'm using another PO to do the actual work. So then I can combine those two together, from the $133,18, till that's done, and then I go to the next purchase order. So it's just a task order basis that we, that we use, and we, we control it through the actual task order system.
Okay. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next item is number nine, Requesting Spending Authorization for the Replacement of the IT Data System Backup.
Mayor and Commissioners, there you go. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. What I'm doing is I'm asking for authorization to spend CIP funds that were budgeted this, for the FY '24 year of $70,000, not to exceed that, for the replacement of our backup systems for the servers. They have, not only is it well over seven years old now, but it failed, that's part of the move from the old building to the new building. It finally took its last breath, so. We're at the point where we need a new one, it was already planned for this year, I was hoping a couple extra months, but it's, we're at that point.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
Do we not currently have a backup system?
We have a disaster recovery unit in place, that's there in case of disaster recovery, but it is not a true backup system. Right now, we're kind of, if we lose the disaster recovery unit, we are in a really bad place. But that system is only designed to be an end-all emergency system in case of like a hurricane or a building fire. It's not a true backup system.
So how quickly will we be, will we be able to get this in place?
Very quickly, I've already got the vendor online, ready to go, we're just waiting for this meeting, and the sentence is done, and we're good to go.
All right. Any other questions?
And I'll be happy to answer any of the more cybersecurity pertinent questions in private.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve spending authority in the not-to-exceed amount of $7,000, $70,000 for the purchase of a replacement data backup system.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
Essentially, yeah.
I appreciate you for, I appreciate you letting us know that this was already planned for the future within this year, so it's really just moving the timeline up a little bit. So, not an additional cost that we were, that we had to spend because of the City Hall move, this is something that was already planned to be done.
Yes, this was totally planned.
Great. All right, any public comment? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right, thank you. That concludes our regular meeting, so we will adjourn, and we'll recess for about five minutes, take a break, and we'll see you back. All right, welcome back everyone to the April sixteenth, 2024 Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting. We'll go ahead and get started with the City Manager and City Attorney Report.
Wanted to update the commission, because we did talk about this at the last meeting regarding the living shoreline, and I just wanted to give you an update. I did hear from State Lands, we have been working cooperatively with them with regard to that one permitting question. We have identified a path forward on that with regard to, they've actually identified some of the land as being upland, as opposed to being sovereign submerged lands. Yeah, I thought that would get you. And so, at least for a portion of it, they will not even need to authorize that portion of the project. So, I continue to work with them in identifying exactly where the boundary line is, and then if there's any further adjustment that's needed to the project. So, it's in a positive and very cooperative relationship in moving forward.
All right. And did you have an update on the, I wanted to have an update on the fifty-room rule that we did last time?
Yes, and you did ask me that.
It's okay.
So, yes, so we, an update on the fifty-room rule. So we are still working on the language that will come back before you, but first it will go to LPA for them to consider, and then it'll come back before the commission for first reading again.
Do we have, like, a timeframe that we're, think that we can get that accomplished by?
I believe it will go to the next LPA meeting, not this upcoming one this week, but the following, but, am I correct? Okay, I see a nod, so yes, I'm correct in that.
In May, so when, when is that meeting?
It's the May ninth.
So then would it be able to be, come before us at the second meeting in May for our first reading?
It may.
Our second meeting?
It may, and I want to say this, it would either be May ninth or May sixteenth. May ninth is an evening meeting, and so sometimes those meetings end up getting canceled, so it will be one of those two meetings.
So then we'd be looking at our second meeting in May for our approval, and then first meeting in June for second reading?
Unless it went to the sixteenth meeting, and it would both be in June.
Okay. All right. Thank you. City Manager?
I just wanted to give a real quick re-nourishment update, part of which is also affected by missing erosion control line, but the authorization for re-nourishment is getting ready to expire, we're hoping it to be renewed in 2025. The prior expiration, we sought to re-nourish our beaches, and the Corps refused based on a shift in policy. We've still got some obstacle in Sunset Beach and Sunshine Beach, most of them revolve around the Army Corps of Engineers and, and not only the ECL, but also the easements, perpetual easements. We are continuing to work on those, both the city and the county are working together, the state on developing the ECL, but the long pole in a tent is going to be the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, any questions on that?
Are we getting any help from Pinellas County?
We, we're getting as much help as they're able to, yes.
With the Corps? With the Corps?
As much help as they're able to provide. And the problem with, with that is that the county's been led to believe things that didn't necessarily end up panning out, so there's, there's not a lot of confidence in the information we're getting from the Army Corps even when we deal. So, we're working through those issues, but the county is aware of it. As a matter of fact, the county is pulling together and coordinating with all of the various beach communities lobbyists up in Washington DC, and seeing if we can't move some things that way.
Is there, is the prognosis for getting that federal permit? Good?
I don't know.
Reauthorization, or?
I don't know.
Well, as you said, it's going to expire next year.
It is. Twenty-fifth of July.
I think it's been extended, I believe that it's been extended, and Stacy can speak to it until thirty-one. Is that correct? Yeah, so no, the twenty-five, yeah, it was, that re-nourishment authorization was extended to thirty-one.
Thank you. I stand corrected, I did not know that. I didn't hear it.
That's the existing authorization?
That's my understanding.
Under the pre, under the old engineering guidelines?
Correct.
So I know when we talked about, like, the current authorization is how they've done re-nourishment in the past, the new authorization was going to be a much larger sand dune, that would be quite a bit different. So this is, they've extended the current one through thirty, thirty-one? Okay, can you, was that, did that come from the county, or, that's news to me as well?
Stacy can forward it.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, the only thing I'll add is I believe that the county is also in the process of pursuing their own design and separate permitting for possibly a re-nourishment project that they would hold, that could be anywhere in Pinellas County, so it's not necessarily that it will be Treasure Island or Treasure Island first, and I, just in giving you an idea on that, they don't even anticipate the design and permitting to be completed until sometime in 2026. And that isn't going out for bid, and that isn't actually doing the re-nourishment. So I, just to give you some idea on, there are a bunch of different avenues that everyone's trying to move forward with on this, but none of them are quickly.
And I asked them to give this update because I, when I talked to Gary about this this morning, I, I know that the county is providing updates to staff and providing updates probably at the Board of Commissioners meetings, and probably at the tourist development commit council meetings, but we're kind of like left in the dark here, and we're the ones that are dealing with the problem on the front lines and talking to our constituents and advocating for our beaches. So I'm trying to brainstorm, and I'm going to reach out to our county commissioner and ask what the best way for us to stay informed is. I think that, at the very least, the county should be publishing some sort of update or report in writing to all of the elected officials up and down the beaches as to what the status is and what progress is being made, and hopefully more than that. I know that they do frequently come to the big C meetings and give an update, but I haven't heard one in several months there, so it just seems like all this information is scattered everywhere and going through different channels. So I'm going to suggest to county commission that we, that they put together some sort of subscription where people can sign up to get updates on, on this, because it's just kind of all over the place.
I'm not really sure how to ask this question, but there's a lot of concern with Sunset Beach residents, in particular the ones that live right on West Gulf Boulevard, on the water, that the next major storm that comes through here, forget about beach erosion, that there might be homes falling into the, falling into the ocean. Is that a concern that the city shares as well, or are we overreacting there on Sunset Beach?
Well, I don't know if you're overreacting. Had been what we've identified as an imminent threat or an existential threat, it's, it, it depends on storm, obviously. So, that's, that's a bad question, but the best answer I've got is we're sure. We don't think on normal storms that that's going to be a big threat, but we're not in normal storm times anymore.
Yeah, I'm certainly concerned about that, and I relayed that after Adalia, before we did the dune restoration, I walked up and down the beach with county commissioner Kathleen Peters and state senator Nick DeSigley, just to give them a firsthand look at, like, what it looked like and what happened after Adalia. So, I know that that was instrumental in getting the dune restoration done, but it really comes down to the, to the core, not budging on this easement issue for us, that's really what it comes down to, is they've changed their policy and are requiring easements, but they won't tell us what easements we need, because they are now saying we need that ECL. It's just, it's, reasoning for it not happening is, has changed, but it still is, the Army Corps is responsible, but they're the, where the, the problem, or where the bottleneck is. So, I know that Congress, Congresswoman Luna had something, she was pushing through Congress in the Worda bill, that she was confident was going to basically force the Army Corps to do these projects. I don't, I haven't heard any update from her, she came and spoke to the Suncoast League of Cities several months ago, so I was going to follow up with her as well and find out what that, what's up with that. But that's something that would be in this, like, what I'm saying is, we need to have communication, and this is a project that is led by the county for our benefit, and they're the ones that are the main points of contact with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they're the ones that are driving the policy, and it should be there to our, working with our federal government representatives to get those things changed, so they're, that, the county staff is the most knowledgeable about this, so they should be providing all of us updates on a regular basis. So, there's, I still, I have questions, and I'll get answers and have the city manager kind of forward that over to you guys.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, City Manager? All right, we'll move into our discussion items. First is Resolution 2024-03, repeal and replace Resolution 2023-03 to update the parks and recreation facilities rental policy for the City of Treasure Island and recognize nonprofit groups and organizations.
Good evening. The commission designate certain city facilities for free use for Treasure Island not-for-profit groups that main purpose is for the betterment of Treasure Island, and that includes any group of Treasure Island residents, businesses, or property owners. Staff recommends repealing Resolution 2023-03 and replacing it with Resolution 2024-03 for the following. Run for the Beaches is now a 501(c)(4) organization, and so they have requested free use for monthly meetings, an annual fundraiser, and their annual meeting to be considered by the commission. We were going to recommend deleting the Treasure Island Focus Group as they've not met in over a year, and I'm not even sure if they are still a active...
They're not.
Okay, organization, and then just updating names of our City Hall facilities and rooms. So those are the changes to the new resolution.
Any questions for Kathy?
Just the ones that you mentioned, that's all?
That's the only changes. It, the resolution is extensive, it includes all the civic associations and Iolets, and I think, oh gosh, there's a whole list of them. The Historical Society, I believe, and now the Run for the Beaches, so the list is extensive as to what facilities they can use and what organizations are permitted to use what.
The facilities that can be used are the garden room over the, in the community center, the Treasure Bay Clubhouse, City Hall Crowsnest Boardroom, which is on the fifth floor, and the Beach Pavilion and Park Gazebos. So this does not include free use of the main...
No.
What's the room?
So in our current fee schedule, all nonprofits still have to pay the nonprofit fee to rent the promenade deck, which is on the fifth floor.
And what about the community center?
Community center is offered free.
The whole, the big space? The whole, the big space is offered for free as well, for these groups?
Yes.
And what is the nonprofit rate for the?
It is.
What did you call it?
It's the Promenade Deck. We're learning all our pirate names too. So we have the Quarter Deck, the Fly Bridge, Crow's Nest, and Promenade Deck. So nonprofit rate, it is like one-third off, so I think the rate, currently we have the old auditorium rate for the Promenade Deck, so it's just a placeholder until we do the new fee schedule for fiscal year 25, but I think the rate is like $400 for nonprofit right now.
Okay. Should we be amending the fee schedule since we have quite a bit of the year left?
So we will be doing that in fiscal year 25, but right now our fee schedule fits within this resolution. So we're good, we don't have to change anything at this moment. The rates were not there yet as to what we want to charge. We've gone to hourly for a lot of our facilities now because not everybody needs the standard six hours, so we're just kind of evaluating everything in the room just to see where we're at right now.
Does that put us in a position, are we okay to be charging fees that aren't in the fee schedule?
No, they are in the fee schedule. I, we actually put them in there in fiscal year 24, so we're good. We're good with all the rates. What they were, were the old auditorium rates and we were in prep, we hadn't thought that we would be in the facility this year, so we had the rates in the fee schedule.
Oh, we, we thought we would.
They're in there.
Okay.
We planned for it.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions? All right, are we okay moving this forward?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, next item is number two, discuss the Paradise Island landscaping project scopes.
Hopefully you can hear me a little better tonight. I'll just give a very quick recap because I know that was a long discussion that we had last time. So originally we had budgeted and planned a project to replace the landscaping and the irrigation on Paradise Boulevard. Sorry, I'm struggling here. So that was one project and then we had another project that we had proposed on the lanes, Paradise Lane and Treasure Lane, to redo the landscaping from Paradise Boulevard to the West Bridge. And on the north side additionally, it was to re-establish a swale area for the purposes of drainage to get the water off the road and that would also entail replacing the irrigation on that north side also. So there was quite a bit of discussion last time. Staff was requested to put together a map that would show both the health and the, the imminent nature of some of the palm trees on Paradise Boulevard. So we did that mapping exercise and that's provided here. What we're finding is that none seem to be in the high voltage lines right now. We do have quite a bit that are within low voltage lines and the, the communications lines. We found that there were eleven that need replacement and six or seven that were formally removed that should be replaced with something. And then we also were asked to look at potentially in lieu of, or in addition to the work that we discussed on the West Causeway, we wanted to look at what we could do to freshen up the median in the short term. So not necessarily planting new trees there that may be removed with a larger project later, but the removal of the bottle brush trees, there's about ten out there and that's from the club entrance to the West Bridge and then using the lamp or the light poles to center some landscaping on, so it would kind of mirror what you see out on the east side of the Causeway. That would not include the extensive bullnose landscaping with the lilies and the Joseph's Coat, but what we have in the memo is a staff-led project around $8,000 to use the lamp poles and then we'd have the muli grass on one, coontie on the next, kind of like you see on the other side. And then we could always come back later and do more if more was, was requested. So I'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. So let's take these two separate things, so we'll talk about Paradise Boulevard first. And I, I'll start off, I had the opportunity today to go out and drive Paradise Boulevard in a golf cart with Gary Patenziano, the Paradise Island Civic Association Beautification Chair, right? So we took a look at this map that Stacy provided us and stopped and looked at each individual palm tree and kind of looked at their notes and looked at the tree and kind of got eyes on the project, which was very helpful to do. But what quickly became apparent to me, which wasn't super apparent through the map without seeing it in person, was the median on the first page of the map, which is right in front of the Paradise Towers. There are one, two, three, four, five Foxtail Palms and then two sets of double cabbage Palms. And all five of the Foxtail Palms are noted by Public Works as needing to be replaced and they all are, like, they were all flooded in the street flooding that we had as a result of those two storms last year. So those are all in very bad condition. So if those were removed, I think we would have quite a, or they need to be removed, but if we removed them and didn't replace them with something, we'd have quite a large stretch of median there that would look very bare and not great. So what Gary and I talked about, and I'm hopeful that we can get some support for, was to replace the two on each end, number nine and number seventeen on the map, replace those with Foxtail Palms. So just replacing like for like, because there's sightline issues at the, in the bullnose, so that there's purple outlined area on the map that shows where the sightline for like U-turns at that median has to be a certain height. So Stacy has said that really the only type of palm, we'd have to plant a relatively tall palm with a clear trunk in those areas. So if we did that at each end, then you'd have a Foxtail on each end, then the cabbage Palms, and then where thirteen, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are in the middle, we could do some sort of like low-growing palm, like a Christmas palm or something like that, which would provide that, a lower growing, but still a palm tree that would continue to kind of look consistent, but also not provide something that's going to put us right back where we started here with palm trees growing into the power lines in a couple years. So that's what, and really the rest of the median, or the medians all the way down Paradise Boulevard, the ones that have already been removed are fine, they're kind of scattered throughout. The ones that are being recommended to be removed additionally are minimal on the rest of the stretch of Gulf Boulevard, or Paradise Boulevard, so it's really that median. And then also the two additional medians right after that in front of Treasure Bay, those were identified as needing to be replaced too. So I think the same concept for number nineteen and twenty might be beneficial as well with like a Foxtail on each end and then some smaller Palms in the middle. So I don't know what the cost for that would be, but Gary was in agreement that that sounded like a good approach and I think that maintains, like we talked about last time, consistency, but also not planting all new Foxtails that are going to grow right back into the power lines. So just wanted to hear your thoughts and feedback on that. And also going forward with the grass and the irrigation.
I have just one comment, which was just that nineteen would need to be the clear trunk ones.
Yeah.
They would have, they would be the taller ones.
Oh, okay.
Because they're, it's a short median, so it's within line of sight.
And then it looks like twenty-six and twenty-eight also have issues. Are they gone?
Twenty-six has already been removed, so that's gone entirely, which I think it's fine and it doesn't need to be replaced. It doesn't look unusual. Twenty-eight has been, one of the stalks was cut down, so it's just a single stalk Foxtail and that looks okay too, so you wouldn't need to replace that.
Because I tried to drive around and look at them and figure out which.
Yeah, it's helpful to do that.
It is, absolutely.
And then, let me see if I had any other.
Driving and counting and kids riding bikes.
Yeah. And then all the, the other one was number five that was identified here as, and I mentioned this to Stacy before the meeting, it has not been removed. It says it has a fungus and it's a single stalk currently and the single stalk is like not in good condition at all, so I think that one might need to just be removed entirely and I think it would be fine without replacing. Does that sound like a good approach to everyone?
And the ones that will replace, the cabbage are more salt tolerant?
The ones, no, the cabbage aren't coming out, cabbage will stay. The ones replaced, two Foxtails will be replaced with Foxtails. And then in between there, it would be a, like a shorter palm, I was just going to leave that up to Stacy, what I think the neighborhood voted, so just take that into consideration. Christmas palm was one idea, I think those are pretty good. Okay? Thank you. I think that'll, I think that'll address everyone's concerns on Paradise Boulevard at least. All right, so Paradise Lane and Treasure Lane. So I think kind of divvy this up to, and Stacy mentioned the median. So is everyone okay with moving forward with that plan, just strictly talking about the median where it's something that the staff can do in-house and kind of create that consistent look with the smaller planting as in removing the bottle brush?
Yeah, now that would be, there are ten, I, I count them almost daily as I drive by them and I see. So there also are some hedges that are there as well, but to be consistent with what the other side is, they would come out as well then? Okay, that's, that's important.
We have a plan, or there was a plan at one point in time to just to go ahead and do everything all at the same time there and what we're talking about right now is just piecemeal?
So the, the plan was, didn't have anything to do with the medians, right?
Correct, it never involved the medians.
Okay.
So I'm going to, the next thing, so if we're all okay with the medians, then I want to talk about the sides. So I think for $8,000, that's a great way to try and spruce up at the very minimal, that's what we'll be able to do. So then the remaining question is what to do on the sides in between Treasure Lane and Paradise Lane and the Causeway. So what I've been, I've been asking a lot of questions and trying to glean as much info as I can, but so there was, so I think I kind of in my head organized it as three different scenarios that we could move forward with there. The top option would be, as Stacy has talked about, the full like Elevate TI project, which calls for elevating that road. It's currently at about three and a half foot elevation and Elevate TI's protocols call for it to be at five point one, so we as a commission had talked at some point about that being kind of the inaugural project for Elevate TI with showing the community how to elevate a road and what it would feel like. That's going to be the most expensive option. So that would entail elevating the road, redoing the drainage to like the maximum that it should be designed to and engineered to, and then re-landscaping all those sides. That would be something we would go after grant funding for. So like we talked about at the last meeting, that's something that could take quite a long time, could take, could be three to five years down the pike. Scenario two, which I, we've also talked about last time, would be less expensive than that full Elevate TI project, but it would be a simpler drainage project where the, the piping, we would pipe the swales into the existing stormwater drain so that there would be better water flow and those swales would drain quicker.
And that would be on both sides, the, both north and south?
Yeah.
Yes, and it would be curbed as well. And it would also involve reconstruction of the roadway, which needs to occur as well. So it would still be a full roadway and drainage project, but it would be less likely to be funded heavily through grants.
I'm not advocating for any of these scenarios, I'm just putting them out there in my kind of organized way. So it basically the full product without elevating the road. It would be taking care of the drainage, not, and taking care of the landscaping, but not doing the full roadway elevation.
And that does.
That might be like, don't know costs, I don't want Stacy to put herself on the spot and come up with that, but it obviously wouldn't be as much as elevating the road, but it would still be quite a big investment for the city and like Stacy just said, not as ripe for potential grant funding.
But we would be taking out all the bottle brush trees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my scenario three was two, which is a hybrid of what was kind of proposed and what we've talked about as an, an option for the, like, the most economical, would be to re-establish the swale on the north side of the road. And then in order to beautify the edge or the sides a little bit more than they currently are, without planting new trees, we could remove some of the bottle brush trees and do like some muli grass and like more simple landscaping between the bottle brush trees that are left to give the whole thing a little bit of a consistent look and fix the irrigation. But that wouldn't be changing the like drainage really at all, it would be re-establishing that swale. But I think that that, I've, I've heard from residents that they would like to have those sides beautified, so this is kind of my like good, better, best option of that beautification of those side streets. So re-establishing the swale, removing some trees, fixing the irrigation, and then adding some simple landscaping between the remaining bottle brush trees. So what I was going to ask is maybe we, if that's something that we're interested in like exploring more as options, that maybe we ask staff to go back and prepare estimates for what those different options would, would cost.
That one option, I did talk to staff a little bit more this afternoon about that and there is a concern that when you re-establish that swale, that you may impact some of the roots of the trees that you wanted to preserve more than they can handle at their age. There's that risk.
Risk, yeah.
Now, at one point, hadn't you?
Obviously option four is doing nothing.
At, at one point, hadn't you done a landscaping for the, the two sides that had some sort of tree and some grasses and everything else?
So what's changed since then is there had been a lot of discussion back and forth, I guess amongst staff and conversations that you all may or may not have had with Amy about how to prioritize these very large projects when you're looking at elevation. So while a few years ago, we did look at the West Causeway being the first, we started to have a lot of conversations about development that was taking place downtown and other roadway concerns that may be addressed times, so there may have been an opportunity to kind of solve a lot of issues downtown at the same time. So it was thought, well, maybe we hold off on the west side, maybe we look at downtown more heavily. Well, since we started talking about these landscaping problems, or the landscaping, you know, that people want to have spruced up, we have had concerns from residents about how they feel about the intermediate drainage fix that we did on the south side, which is really just re-establishing what was there initially. But I do understand the concern that after days, it's not nice to still have water sitting there. And so, so we thought this would be, and when we proposed it in the budget, a good intermediate fix until we came back and discussed when to do the project, but we've since heard from people that, that maybe that's not the best interim solution. And so that's kind of why we're looking at alternatives and holding off on that, because when you dredge out that swale on the north side, you are impacting irrigation and you are impacting those trees likely. And so then residents who live there are losing their screening. And so the concern is if we put those trees back now and then decide that we do have a good grant, we want to do a big project in five years, those trees are going to start looking really pretty three to five years from now and that could become an issue like we've discussed on Paradise Boulevard, taking out trees. So that's the concern there.
And I think the total cost that we have for like currently allocate, we have some carry forward and we have some money budgeted from the stormwater fund to do those, that project that was already, there's actually. and we have some money budgeted from the Stormwater Fund to do those, that project that was already, there's actually a map of it on the city website right now with the Geiger trees and everything in between, like full landscaping plan on the side. But like Stacy's saying, and that's kind of where, why I didn't include that in my list of options was, maybe it should still be an option. But knowing the cost of it and knowing that if down the road, we do a full project on those and we do a big drainage project, that that might impact the landscaping that we do put in there. So I think we just need to be okay with spending that money and then having the potential of that landscaping being damaged three to five years down the road or taken out in order to do the project.
Do, do we really think that we could do this in three to five years?
So the project that would be piping without the elevation, I, I, I think absolutely, depending on how you prioritize that in the upcoming budget year. With regard to the Elevate project, we have been notified by our lobbyists that there are grants available that cover eighty percent of that cost, which is significant, which may end up costing out of pocket about the same as the lesser project when you take the reimbursement into consideration. But there's just so many factors when it comes to these grants. I still have not received the grant work plan on the federal side for the master pump station. So if that tells you anything about the timeline for not only getting awarded the grant, but then getting the subsequent agreement that goes along with it, we just don't have control over those things. So that's, that's hard to say. And sometimes grants, the applications are more successful the second year because they've heard it before and they're, you know, familiar with the project and it just takes that second round to get the funding, so.
Yeah, well, I'd, Mayor, I'd like to have us at least see the price tag on, on that option four and, and what it is. Because I mean, that's, I mean, that's the entrance to the, to our city. And so.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. And I think that was, for me, was the like cost benefit analysis of do we invest? Say it's two hundred thousand dollars to do that, is that, are we okay with that level of an investment, knowing that in three to five years could be seven?
Right.
Who knows? Ripping it all out again. Maybe the answer's yes.
Let me just add a little bit to that. How long does a landscaping project tend to last? I mean, it doesn't last forever, clearly.
The bottle brush trees have.
Bottle brush. They have.
The uglier, the longer it lasts.
Something like what we planned up at this point, how long would that?
Yeah, our, the irrigation systems that we've had have been around for decades. They've lasted a long time. We point repair, that's why our staff on Paradise Boulevard particularly are like, we, we can't point repair these anymore, there are so many problems. But generally speaking, the small stuff that you put in, like the decorative type plants, those get changed out, you know, when they need to. We've gone to perennial plants that are more native and more salt tolerant. So they, they should hang out longer than like the annuals and some of the ones you're probably more accustomed to seeing. So basically, the more expensive ones, the bigger plants, the bigger shrubs, the trees, they last longer than the small ones.
On the concept that, or at least the potential for the vegetation to have to be removed in three, five, seven, nine years, whatever, is it not feasible to just do a conceptual plan for what the ultimate project is gonna look like? And gear your current vegetation, whatever you're gonna replant, so that it's not gonna be disrupted on the road?
The elevating project would disrupt all of that area to slope back down to the lane.
The whole thing over to Treasure Lane and Paradise Lane?
Yes.
That whole shoulder?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Because the road will need to be, it's a foot and a half of elevation basically. So having enough drainage and landscaping over there, I guess it would need the whole amount.
I don't know what, I don't know what that slope would be if you raised the roadway a foot and a half. What is the side slope?
I don't recall the width of the median. I can get that for you. We can, I mean, we can look at alternatives, we're just so early on. I don't know if there's any, any utilities that would need to be upgraded at the same time. When you're undertaking such a big project, you want to make sure that you're not going back and touching it again. So if there's other infrastructure that needs to be addressed, it could be within that area. I mean, it's just, you also have just the general construction footprint to install that curb. I mean, there's just damage even if it wasn't completely regraded.
Thank you, yeah, that, that's my point.
Yeah.
So Stacy did give me some numbers before the meeting that were outlining that project that you referred to, kind of what we originally planned to do out there. So we have a hundred thousand dollars in general fund carry forward, which was saved from not, so she gave me the like project estimates and where the money was coming from. So that came from savings from not contracting out a portion of the city's ground maintenance work. And then there's also in the Stormwater Fund for this year, there's fifty thousand dollars for the swale restoration on the north side. And in the general fund, there's a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars from Seventh Street East savings that we could use for, because we performed all of that work in-house. So that totals up to a little over two hundred and fifty thousand of funds that we could use. And then the estimate for the project, as you were describing, was a design fee of thirty thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency, so about thirty-two thousand. And then the estimated construction cost was two hundred and twenty thousand. So that's where I, I knew I had that two hundred thousand number in my head somewhere. So that's the question is whether we do that full project. And so is, is two hundred, are we okay with spending that much now to have a really fully beautifully landscaped entryway?
If we do part three, the hybrid proposed, we could cover that in-house. And then are we able to plant closer to Paradise Lane? And so that gives a swale and a little bit more drainage? For anything that we put in there and plant ways?
I'm not sure I follow that.
Because the bottle brushes look like they're smack dab in the middle and close to the road. So are we able to plant closer towards Paradise and Treasure Lane when we, if we put something, a buffer plants in?
That, that is the plan. We also have the issue on those lands with people parking there and they, they run over those communication boxes that everyone doesn't like seeing broken all the time, they're hitting irrigation. So the idea was to plant a little bit further back and that kind of creates a little more buffer for that, too.
I know, I've, I've seen the number, I think it's twenty-one feet is what each of the, if I remember right. And they, they definitely are not right on the road. They are closer to the-
The lane.
The lane than, than the road by quite a bit. But they've got some ugly roots. If you're ever out there and you, you walk that, I mean, they got big ugly roots that come up out of the ground and all of a sudden you go back under the ground and two feet away, they come back up. And it's, yeah, some ugly roots on those ugly trees.
Well, they're designed to catch water and soil is what a bottle brush is from Australia, because we had the tree in the park.
Yep.
And they're designed to trap soil and they wreck havoc with drainage. So that's part of the problem with planting them. Yeah, when they're young, they look really pretty, but when they get older, they just start to twist with the weather and they trap dirt and they cause irrigation and drainage problems. Say what? Drainage problems and crooked roots, yeah.
Well, and maybe we ha, I mentioned having them, having staff come back with some more information on those couple options. But if we have enough information in front of us to make a decision now, we can always do that, too. So what do we, what's everyone think?
Well, I said, I, I think that it is important that, you know, we've done a great job with the east side. And the west side Causeway is really the, the full entrance, you know, of coming into our city. I don't want it to just waste money by any means, but I do want to see it look, you know, very impressive as people come in. And if that's what we're talking about, what, a quarter million dollars? Yeah, that's a lot of money. But I think that if we asked our constituents, you know, if we can do this whole West Causeway, how would you feel about it? And I think that, that we probably would hear a lot of positive comments from folks. And I think that everybody understands, you know, it's, it's not our money up here, it's the taxpayers' money. But I think that we'd probably have very positive outcome.
So it is just from, not the medians, but the lanes, the improvements that were suggested in here were just from Paradise Boulevard to the West Bridge.
Correct.
There still is that, the sides on the other end.
Yeah, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen over on that end, but yeah, so I, I do understand that.
If we proceed now, are we just throwing money down the rattle? Because five, seven, nine years from now, we're gonna tear it up anyhow?
That's a question for the-
Possibly.
Rest of the commission, not for Stacy.
Well, if we, if we do the, the non-elevating project, I can, we're working through some concepts right now to develop that estimate and I can look to see if there is a way to at least preserve the trees and protect the trees during that other project. That's a potential.
I would think that's an integral part, along with identifying what is exactly in the subsurface in the swales between the lanes and the causeway.
Do you want to take some public comment? Mr. Potenziano's up here, but we haven't called for public comment yet.
I, I'm just jumping right in there.
Commissioner Manning, what?
So the, the Paradise medium is a go, right? We'll start that soon?
Yes.
Get that going?
Yes.
Yes, that's, okay, I just want to, so that's, okay, good.
Sorry, continue.
And Bob, you ask a good question. But the thing is, when you asked the question, it was three, five, seven, nine. And, you know, if, if we were talking three years, I think you're right. If we're talking nine years or more, then probably it's worth going forward.
You're willing to risk taxpayers' dollars in terms of a quarter million dollars?
Oh, I don't think it's a waste. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waste it. You know, when you're talking about, you know, the appearance and coming into the city, I, I do think that, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars is, is, yeah, I, I do. If you're talking nine years and a couple hundred thousand dollars, yeah, I would put my money on it today.
Yeah, thinking about it from a three years, I mean, that's, if we had a project ready to go in three years and we had to rip it all out, that's almost a hundred thousand dollars per year just to enjoy some landscaping. So that's the question that I'm asking as well. I don't, it gives me a little heartburn, but I wanted to hear what the rest of the commission thinks. I think it would be great for the community to have that beautification. It could be longer than that, so.
How does the beautification integrate with the drainage?
How so?
Well, you're gonna, this is just, the, the two hundred thousand some dollars is just for the median?
Oh, no, no, that's, that's the, that's the drainage, that's, that's the whole bit.
So do we have a plan for the drainage, how that gets integrated with the landscaping?
So the cost estimates that we've worked on so far for the purpose of grant applications is for the Elevate project, which was full roadway reconstruction, drainage, and landscaping. So certainly, when we look at the other alternative that we'll bring to you in budget, so we can talk about the pros and cons and the difference in cost, we would have the same scope without the elevation aspect to it. It would be a, a full encompassing, unless when we do that lesser project, if we choose to go that route, we are able to, to protect those trees. The only other thing I was gonna say is sometimes with non-palm trees, it takes the trees a while to start to flush out and to look nice. So it does, it's not gonna give you quite the instant gratification, I think, that the east side did. So it may take a few years before it starts to really, you know, look really nice.
Well, we have two issues here. One is the beautification of the entryway aesthetics, and I agree with that. And the other one is drainage. Are those two compatible?
It, it does.
If we, if we do the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar option, does that take care of landscaping and drainage?
It does to, to an extent that may not be aesthetically acceptable to some of our residents. But it, it does provide a safer condition such that it gets the water off the road.
Because it would be mirroring what's going, what we have on the south side with just a swale and it, water would stand there.
Right, so that's my point, though, is, and Bob, on landscaping, you know, if it's just landscaping at a quarter million dollars, I agree. But if we get the whole project and we got the drainage and swales and everything else, I, I think that then it starts to come into play. But like I said, if we knew it was three years, no, that probably is. But if it's seven or nine or ten years, you know, we've got to get the, the drainage done either way. And, and the drainage is what, about half of it?
No, probably around sixty thousand or so.
Sixty thousand of, okay. So, but we get our drainage and we begin to get some of that beautification.
But, but recognize what drainage you're talking about. You're talking about reestablishing the swales, not the piping drainage. The piping drainage is significantly more expensive.
Okay.
So there's, there's three, in going back to the mayor's good, better, best, we're still on the good with an enhanced landscaping plan, but the drainage is reestablishing what's already there.
Okay.
And that would be option three, right?
Yeah.
The hybrid proposed?
Right.
With reestablishing the swale and then we could do hybrid three and then apply for grants to really move forward? Because elevating the roadway is essential also to our evacuation. And with the King Tide flooding that we just saw and then the rains, then we still need to make sure we're able to get to and from on the island and not have all the flooding going on.
Yeah, so that was my, my rationale for including, for option three, how I outlined it, was to be somewhere in between the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not doing anything at all. So for less than that, we could still reestablish the swale, take out some of the bottle brush trees, add some simpler landscaping in between and maybe be at like a hundred thousand dollars. And still beautifying the sides. So that dollar stretched a bit, a little bit further, even if it was on a three-year time, timeline.
I for one would like to see that the, you're, you're talking about improving the swale on the north side? Okay, and what about the south side?
It would be mirroring what we have on the south side to the north side.
Nothing would change with the drainage on the south side.
So we'd still have the one, three, five, one, two, three days of, of wet retention?
Yes, there's no piping involved in what we're proposing intermittently here.
If you go to Elevate TI, is there piping?
Yes.
And with the middle option that I proposed was that full pipe, like not an Elevate TI level project, but including the piping that would run it off into the stormwater system and drain those swales quicker than they drain now. Which would be still very expensive like we talked about, and that would not have as much opportunity for grant funding. So we do, we are still in the position of not really having a permanent solution to the drainage, which Mr. Tuning, I know you've talked about a lot as that standing water and the dangerous conditions of the damp sides where you can have deep ruts from the, the tires going off the road. So there wouldn't be any, nothing would be preventing that until we do that full-on drainage project.
If you were to renew the swales, I'll call it, the swale on the north side, I presume that would be deepening it?
Yes.
Okay, are you not expecting an outcome like you have on the south side?
It would be the same outcome on the south side.
So we're creating another potential issue?
That's why we're having the discussion, because I don't want to do that if that's not something that everyone wants.
Yeah. Thank you, I agree.
But right now, how it stands, the water stays on the road instead of going into the ditch. Commissioner Dickey?
I think the drainage problem needs to be addressed sooner than later and, and it needs almost to be separated to the extent that it can from the landscaping issue. Because drainage is a safety issue, it's an evacuation issue, it's something that needs, it's a, it's got all kinds of potential issues of not, not addressing that, that, you know, the drainage there. So I think that needs to be dis- So I think that needs to be discussed and then to the extent that we can work landscaping around it, that, that's fine. But in the short run, I think we need to come up with a plan to deal with the drainage problems there on Paradise Lane.
I agree with that and I think that that's kind of, that was my, another part of my rationale for giving that lowest option of some sort of landscaping on the sides is that lets us not spend a ton of money over there, that we could then really push as quickly as we can to get that Elevate TI project done so that we're taking advantage of grants and getting the drainage solved as soon as we can. But also accomplishing some beautification.
Take me back to Paradise Boulevard. What did we budget for Paradise Boulevard?
Okay.
Just, just on a, just on a budget standpoint.
Yeah, so we budgeted 445,000 dollars for design and construction. The design fee was about 42, after contingency 45, so leaving 400,000 for construction.
Well, but not just construction, what, the project in, in total?
Oh, so the project in total initially was replacing the irrigation and removing all existing landscaping and then putting new landscaping.
Correct. And how much was that total project?
Design and construction was 445 on Paradise Boulevard.
Okay. And so when you take a look at 445,000 dollars going to go into Paradise Boulevard?
We have it budgeted.
Yeah, we have it budgeted, but, but still, I'm going back to the dollars we're spending versus the 250, 245,000 dollars, you know, that we're going to do that segment of the west causeway. I think that relatively there, you know, I, I would take the causeway probably before I would take the Boulevard. So, but it's just, what I'm saying is that 250,000 really isn't a big price tag if we're going to be seven or nine years, we're going to get some drainage out of it, we're going to get, it, it's really not that big of a project, especially when the project is almost double just to do the Paradise Boulevard. I mean, just in, just in relationship.
No argument with that philosophy, however. For the 2, 225,000, we're not doing anything to the south side swale. That is, that, that condition's good. And what we're doing is creating the same thing on the north side. So.
What we're trying to do, though, is one, the, the safety issue that Arden, you know, brought up. You know, we're, we're trying to get the water off the road and it does get the water off the road, but, and if you take a walk down a, that piece of 107th, it's starting to, there's areas that are starting to actually literally fall apart, chunks.
The water that's.
Yeah, chunks of pavement that are, they're, you know, just, now they're just a hazard.
Those are mainly on the, on the south side.
Well, you're seeing a lot of it on the south side as well. I mean, it, it's, it's really the whole thing and that's kind of the, I guess, the whole idea about Elevate TI and, and/or do the other drainage that's going to be the pipes, but then we start to get real expensive and there's going to be time to do it as well. It can't be done quickly.
Commissioner Taft, do you have any, are you leaning one way or the other?
Well, I'm leaning towards option three and going for grant funding to do Elevate TI and put the proper drainage in and do a good job with it all the way around that'll last a longer period of time.
Commissioner Dickey?
Just going to repeat what I just said before and that's that we need to address the drainage issues sooner than later and, and wrap the landscaping around after we've resolved the drainage issues.
So in the meantime, we might have a drop, a little bit more prominent swale on the north side of the road as well?
Yeah.
Is what it's going to look like and getting the grant funding will actually last for a longer period of time, so it's.
Talking to your mic.
Sorry, my bad. I thought I was, I can hear.
How about, in order to have a, since that option three that I proposed, we don't really have an idea of how much that would be. It sounds like the decision is going to come down, I think we all agree that that full drainage project, whether it's elevating the road or not elevating the road and doing the drainage project, needs to be done quickly and pushed forward and hopefully try to get grant funding for, which would be more viable with the elevation of the road. So that aside, then maybe we can look at, get Stacy to get us an estimate on what, we already have, we already know that the fully designed already that's mapped out on the website would cost about 250,000. What would that scenario three that I outlined cost to do? Not take out all the bottlebrush trees, but take out some of them, add some simple landscaping, establish the swale, and then we could make a decision between those two options.
If we lose more of the trees, will that be an issue? Just because of their age and the health of the trees, I just don't know when we dig that out, what we'll be able to preserve.
I don't, I personally don't think so. I think if we go through that and we realize that they have to come out and we have other landscaping there that's new and beautiful, that we would be okay until we get the full project done.
Agreed.
I agree, too.
And approach makes sense. Do we have any public comment? I figured.
Ray Channing, 11205 Third Street East. So I'm not going to get into the Paradise Boulevard. I think you guys are going down a good path of just, you know, pulling out the ones that are bad and replacing those. And I heard the number of 400, I didn't realize it was that much, 450,000 dollars plus, you know, some other things.
That's what we originally budgeted and we're not spending that.
How much is in the budget this year?
That is what's in the budget this year, but we've, based on the resident.
First question would be, are you going to spend?
No.
Okay.
That's what, that's why we're, that's the discussion we're having is the, the plan to just take.
Got you. You'll have some, you'll have some money left over and I think Commissioner Doctor brought up a very good point, which is you'd rather spend probably that much on the entryway and making that look really good and less on Paradise Boulevard. And so you could, you could potentially swap those amounts, right? And by doing such, you could get rid of all of the bottlebrush trees, which we all know are, you know, were probably a great idea in their day, but they're not anymore and they're, you know, about exhausted their life. You had, I'm trying to figure out what happened because you originally had budgeted for a landscape package for the, the west causeway section. No reason, what changed, you know, to change your mind and not go forward with that? It was on the budget, you got the money appropriated, right? You should go forward. The only thing that changed was there was some discussion on drainage. And I'm glad, I, there's, you know, I'm glad that people are listening to me. I'm also not sure I want people listening to me. But the fact of the matter is, I don't think that those costs related to fixing the, the drainage are that much. And if you're going to have a bunch of money left over from Paradise Boulevard, you could shift those funds over there. You could get that accomplished as well as the, the landscaping. So to me and my engineering and construction background says you take the trees out, you fix the drainage and you come back in and you put on some nice landscaping that you originally planned to do that and, and get on with your business. Now with respect to, you guys have known all along on the Elevate TI that you were going to do this and yet you approved putting in the landscaping, right? So what changed? Again, you, you said that you were, you were going to do that work regardless and knowing that you were going to probably go forward with Elevate TI. Now, I don't know who, who thinks we're going to get this done in three years, five years. I don't know. Who thinks you're going to get Elevate TI done in that stretch of the road in five years? I just don't think that's going to happen and I think we've got to be realistic. If it's going to be nine years, 10 years or more, then let's get on with our business, make our city look good and fix that, this problem with the drainage, which is, you know, is a serious, a safety issue and get, and get that entranceway get done and let's, let's, you know, we need to think about on the landscaping, on doing a little bit each year and, and, you know, across the city. You know, it's not the only place, Paradise Boulevard's not the only place, it probably needs some attention here and there. There's problem, you know, there's some issues in Isle of Palms, there's probably a bunch of issues in Isle of Capri and we all know that Sunset is being hit all the time with storms and stuff like that. So we've got to spread the wealth around on that kind of stuff, too. So anyways, but that's my.
Can I ask why, why do you think that that project couldn't be done in three to five years?
I, I think by the time you, you go through the whole process of trying to get funding, because we can't afford it ourselves.
Right.
I mean, if that's, if that's, if we're going to wait on our own taxes, Katie bar the door, we all need to sell our houses, or we need to become the new New Orleans and we'll have Monte Ross, okay, every year, right? So that's just not going to, going to happen anytime soon. I just do not see that. I mean, you've got big projects right now. The Public Works Building, that's way behind. I mean, if you look at your original, I even brought the, in case we got into that whole discussion, that, that, that is thing is so far behind right now and you're not going to catch up. And I would ra, rather us as a city focus on a pump station, sewer lift station. And I know the yard is necessary and I support the yard, I'm not sure the price tag I support, but I support that. Those are the things that we should be focusing on. And, and so until you've really wrapped up all of your funding and what have you, to where it gets to a point where we can actually afford it and, you know, then, then I, then I think that's when you need to talk about things.
You can disregard, I took up a lot of your time, so if you have more to say, you're welcome.
Well, I'm, you know, and these kinds of issues like here in the workshop, I think you should afford everybody as much time and I do appreciate that very much. So that, I just don't think that's going to happen. I mean, let's be realistic, it's just going to take a long time to get all the funding together. And then, you know, there's going to be all kinds of other issues that go into that. You've got utilities beyond just the drainage. Now, if you're lifting the road up, unless you're liv, lifting that land up, too, it stays where it is. And, and then you're going to have to lift Treasure Lane, I guess is what it's called, Paradise Lane, and they're going to have to come up, possibly, I don't know. So until you see all that and you have all that engineered and that's going to be a feat in itself, I, I just don't see that happening anytime soon. So I just, I just think about that. So that's my two cents worth. And I do believe those two ditches, what she's, what she's talking about as far as digging them down, is not necessarily the proper solution on those. I have other thoughts and I've sent you some stuff for you guys to consider. I think an ex, exfiltration trench that's done properly can, can get that done. And I do like the idea of thoughts about taking those ditches and using an exfiltration type thing and then punching pipe through, pushing pipe through into the existing drains and it can be done. So you can use your existing network and make that work. So anyways, what it's worth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sure.
Mary Ellen Huer, Level 240, 108th Avenue, number 101, right over here at Serena Bay. I don't know a lot, but I have learned something over a lifetime. And sometimes the best 75 dollars you will ever spend is on that interior designer coming and telling you, oh, you're making a mistake. So I hope that we have the resources to be able to get landscape architecture, that kind of thing involved in this, so we know we're putting the right plant in the right place at the right time. Because if not, we'll continue to have problems and we don't want to repeat what we've already done and what we've already gone through. I also have something to say that's a compliment. Because I live at Serena Bay, we had some overgrowth of some plants and it was encroaching on the sidewalk. And I asked several times for our board to please cut it back and they didn't want to, they liked the way it looked. One call, one email, it was gone the next day. So thank you all very, very much because you're making it a safer place when you do things like that. And thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, any other public comments? All right, hearing none, does that sound like a good idea to have Stacy put together an estimate of what the option three would cost and then we can compare that to the full project as was already designed?
We'll also bring back before you a cost savings on Paradise Boulevard, an updated estimate there.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, I, that is the last thing on our agenda. Do we have any other public comment for any other topics? Hearing none.